Okay. Good evening. This is the March 7th, 2019 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. We're meeting in Town Council chambers. It is now 7:03 PM. Please stand and join us. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. The commissioner, please introduce yourself, starting on my right.
Brian Condon, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Liam Rose, commissioner.
William Forder, chairman.
Paul Leacy, secretary.
Michael Riley, vice chairman.
Paul Agresta, planning and zoning administrator.
Scott Schatz, town engineer.
Sam Stroud, city manager.
Okay. Thank you. No organizational or administrative matters, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to an open hearing? Seeing none. General appointments, we have none. We are going to skip past public hearings for now because the applicant is not here. And we will move on to site plan review and permit amendment modifications. Item number eight, SEP 2014-13-83, file number 549A, 464 Main Street. Permit approval amendment modification application for commission authorization for zoning, 7.4.2C, for conditional certificate of occupancy. Will, anything to note for exhibits?
Yeah, we have a permit approval amendment modification. Exhibit two, approval of location survey. Exhibit three, ASBIL overlay plan. Exhibit four, original motorized application. Exhibit five, notice to Frank Ward Company. Exhibit six, notice to Public Health. Exhibit seven, certificate of occupancy report by town engineer. And exhibit eight, RT Town Engineering. That's all.
Okay. To the opposite.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Kevin Solely, licensed professional engineer at the State of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, offices located here in Monroe, 510 Main Street, record keeping. Just the green card receipts for the notices. I also have, just as it was referenced in the comments, the approval from the Department and Aquarium and Water Company.
Is the approval the final sentence?
I think, well, the, one of them's a permit to discharge from the Health Department. The one of them was a notice from Aquarium and Water Company that everything's been installed with all the applicable requirements. Those are two items that were listed in the...
Yeah, no, they just need to be the final sentence. That's all. When you said approval, I didn't know what that meant.
So, here tonight, I'd talk about a project that's been ongoing in the town of Monroe since 2013. I'm very excited that we're here at this stage of the project, and hopefully, this is the last time before you talking about it. So, just to orient everybody, the site's located on 464 Main Street. It's an assembly of properties, right near the intersection of Route 25 and 59, Eastern Road. So, this was an assembly of a bunch of parcels. There was zone change in place, a number of variations. What was approved was a retail building. What we have up here is actually the ASBIL, so the project has been constructed. You guys probably drive by it all the time. It's a beautiful stone building. In accordance with our approval requirements, we submitted the ASBIL. We submitted the ASBIL overlay. And just given the time of year that we're currently at, we are requesting approval for a conditional CO. In our application materials, we submitted a list of a number of items that we'd like to do in the springtime, once the ground thaws. And what I wanted to go through tonight was, obviously, staff has been great to work with throughout the duration of this project. We've got a number of construction revisions that we've worked with, worked through with them. But in order for us to get the conditional CO, we had to come back before the commission. So, what I wanted to do was go through all of the comments issued from staff, and kind of talk through each one, and we can highlight again which we want to do in the immediate future, and then what we want to postpone until the spring, and kind of talk through those, and make sure the commission's happy and comfortable with all those different elements. So, to start with Will's letter, we'll just go through all of them. Number one, there are a number of elements that he refers to in the engineer's letter, which we're going to go through in detail as well. But I wanted to touch on Bill's comments first. The first had to do with the light fixtures, the pole-mounted light fixtures throughout the parking lot. And going back and looking, so in this zone, the maximum elevation, maximum height for light poles is 20 feet. What we had shown on our plans was a mounting height of 15 feet for the lights. But the dimensions on the plans here for our detail actually showed 15 feet from ground to the top of the pole. But our lighting schedule showed a mounting height of 15 feet for those individual fixtures. So, when we did our model, we did it based on a light at 15 feet above grade. What was installed, because of the pole itself and the manufacturers, the light pole is mounted at around 15 feet, but the pole, the top of this arch, does extend to about 17 feet. So, rather than, rather than have to, having to rip all those poles out, we're requesting the commission allow these poles as installed because they do comply with the regulations and they don't exceed, they don't exceed the 20 feet max light pole height. Now, I will say, in the submission, information that we submitted initially, you know, we obviously didn't have the benefit of staff's comments. So, some of the things we talked about tonight with, based on response to staff's comments, we obviously just got those this week, so we did have a chance to give you a formal narrative of what we're doing this evening, but just a record.
For future reference, I think this has been a problem with many applications where the lighting company does the lighting. Because I don't think you did that light one.
We did. We did this light plan. Yeah, this was our...
But you also did the detail, then, so...
And I take, and yeah, we definitely had a, definitely, there was a scribbler's error here.
Well, as you've been well aware, I've been hard pressed to get that, those types of details, very clear, the height of the light, and that there seems to have been, I've had, not just with other projects, that the disconnect with the mounting height versus the detail has come back around, around, and around.
Yeah.
So, for future reference, let's...
I think, I think this, I think on recent applications, we've done a lot better because we've kind of gone through this issue. So, I know recent projects that were approved, like 205 Monroe Turnpike, I think we had more detail on our light fixture in terms of, you know, height, height of the boat, height of the base, height of the pole, height of the mounting, of the fixture itself. This was from 2013. It was a little bit older, 2013, 14, so...
Well, again, we keep getting, I get it, you, you now are doing your lighting photometrics. We have other people that don't, they get it, and then we have the same problem. And those engineers don't usually even have an understanding of what the photometric guy did.
Right.
And that's sort of been a problem, so we want to make them in sync going forward.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you don't exceed the maximum allowed height, so...
Correct.
You're asking for revision to your approved light detail.
Yes, we're asking the commission to approve the lights as installed because even as measured, they don't exceed the allowable height.
Okay. But you are saying that the photometric that's on the approved plan is representative of where the light fixture is?
Yes. Yes. So, all of our model was based on those lights being at a 15-foot high mounting height. And that's where they ended up. The next comment was additional light fixtures have been installed on the building. So, these are emergency lights, and they were installed as part of the fire marshal's requirements. These are all treated as such. They're only for emergency purposes. They're not on. So, rather than requesting, you know, we're requesting the commission allow those to stay and be used only for emergency purposes.
How do we control that?
Pretty much, no, it's a life safety issue.
No, the light, that part of it's fine.
I think they're probably on with the emergency lights. When the power goes off, the lights...
Yeah, are they automatic to that?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
They're only behind in a power failure scenario.
Can't override that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe we could, but it's a life safety issue.
No, the light is appropriate for that.
Oh, to override the light?
Can I go to switch that on?
No.
I think that's like, that'd be like trying to switch on a light over the exit sign.
That's on all...
No, no, the, the, two on both sides. Signs, number of the signs, I'm going to touch on that in a minute, but they've actually adjusted most of those. I have pictures of those later. In addition to the above noted incomplete site improvements, the following required sign-offs have yet to be provided. The Monroe Health Department...
Let's back up to the signs. You're going to put the signs up?
I have pictures of signs. I'm going to, I was going to touch on those later in the presentation.
I don't need to see a picture. Are you going to set the signs?
Yes.
Okay.
The other items that are incomplete, the Health Department, I submitted that for the record. The letter from Mitch Jackson, this was actually from February, the permit to discharge. The Aquarium and Water Company regarding the water supply, we have a letter from Aquarium and Water saying that it was installed back in September, and everything is completed in accordance with their requirements. DOT encodes the permit and sightline completion and acceptance. So, there was, we actually, there is an email from the DOT inspector that was submitted to the town saying that everything was done, the final inspection was completed, and all work is done. They're just holding the bond until the spring. I know there was a response to that email from the town, but the town does have a letter from the DOT saying everything was done. But we're going to touch, we're going to touch on those comments also. And then Inland Wetlands permit completion and acceptance, I think that's something we'll do as part of this process. The applicant's cover letter is not addressed the conversion of the standing site stabilization and restoration bond to performance bond as would be needed subject to the commission grant the applicant's request. We're certainly happy to comply with that. That's obviously a requirement in order to secure this. Back to that DOT approval letter. After the DOT sent an email to the town saying everything was good, town staff, being diligent, they sent an email back identifying a number of items that had happened. So, the signage in the photo, signage in photos was blown over, so they actually adjusted some signs based on Scott's comments and readjusted signs that had blown over. It was, I think they came out, I think they put them in, and then the next day, there were 60 mile-per-hour winds, which affected that. They also moved the four lease signs to what's outside of that sightline triangle.
They did move that?
They did. Yeah, they shifted that over.
And they installed the signs back? Do you know if they did it according to the plan details? Because one of our points on the picture was that they didn't put the foundation according to the detail.
Yeah, so part of the issue was, was the time of installation and the freezing temperatures. So, they installed it, and what we've said was, they're going to, you know, all the signs are in, and I explained to the contractor, if you want to open this, you need to have the signs in because you need to be able to tell people which way to go and how to travel. So, all the signs are in, and then if there have to be any adjustments in the spring, once the ground thaws, they do that in accordance with the DOT detail, but...
How do we, how do we know that if they, if they from the full downing?
No, I don't believe that, I don't believe, I think they've been installed in such a way where they're not, they're not going to fall down.
Okay. I was just, you understand from the inspector that they didn't have the depth of the foundation that they're supposed to?
Well, one of the other components that after the town sent the email back to the inspector, he's also coming out again next week. And they're going to provide another secondary email to the town.
That's what we think. They didn't, they're, either the poles are not long enough so they couldn't push them down far, or they didn't push them down. That looks, it's supposed to be seven feet exposed, but we're wondering if not enough is in the ground. That's why they fell over.
Well, it's got the breakaway.
Yeah. Okay, well, it's, if they're not where they're supposed to be, Mother Nature will force the issue.
And then they'll go right back, they have to stay in it. And I think, once again, once the spring comes and everything thaws, we're going to be able to make any final adjustments that are necessary. But any and all signs, they're doing, and they want to do, or they have done. Some of the other comments, the crosshatch, I think that's done, the striping, and then the, and they can't do any additional striping right now anyways because of the temperature. There, as part of the spring, they're going to come back, do it, and do the final base course of paving, and they're going to restripe the parking lot anyway, so any additional striping that's needed, they can do it that time. And then the pedestrian guy at the sidewalk adjacent to Frontier Pole, that's been replaced. So, that pedestrian guy has been installed. And then again, just to... So, then onto Scott's reports. Support, we can, we're going to, I'm going to go through all these. Number one, adjust all pole-mounted lighting to 15...
If you want, I'll, might save you the trouble.
Okay.
Let me just highlight the ones that I think that are issues we should probably talk about tonight.
I would rather go through the whole list.
Oh, you want to go through it?
Yeah, I want to, I like to be comprehensive. So, number one, adjust pole-mounted lighting to 15 feet. We'd like to, as we talked about before, we'd like to leave them as installed. Replace lighting above every door with fixed and shielded fixtures unless accepted as emergency lighting only. That's what we're requesting, to leave those in as emergency lights.
Do you have wall packs on the building?
Yes.
Are they shielded?
Yes. Yep, they're all, they're, those were installed in accordance with the approved plan and the correct fixtures. Provide pedestrian guy at Frontier Pole 29430. We've done that, provided a picture of that. Rotate the one-way signs at the Northern Axis Drive. That's been completed. Fix blown-over signs that have proper installation depth per CT DOT specs. That's been done. Remove, relocate existing four-lease sign. That's been relocated. Adjust the grading in the two regular parking spaces adjacent to the handicap reserve spaces. The curving along these spaces, we're supposed to transition from flush to full height, six-inch reveal over six feet, and then maintain full height. Conversely, installation of bollards or other means of protection control could alternatively be provided. So, I talked through the, talked through this with the contractor. Based on who was making that transition work from a curb standpoint, he'd actually like to install bollards in those locations for those specific spaces.
For the site plan?
I don't have a picture.
I have a, I don't have a picture, but I have a survey. So, that's...
The other spaces that are flush...
Can you zoom in on that?
The other spaces that are flush, whoops, sorry, have the handicap signs as, as functioning as the bollard to prevent the car from overhanging and walking.
So, yeah, so there are these signs, functions, bollards. We'd put two additional bollards right here, rather than make that transition. They felt with the curb, with the curb and how that looked, you know, alternatively, he suggested doing wheel stops, and I suggested against that. Obviously, I don't believe that's something the commission likes to see anyways, and I don't believe, I don't think it's permitted, so we said alternatively...
Yeah, they wouldn't be permitted in that location where you have a sidewalk curb people walking.
Exactly.
Why'd they make the change without telling us?
That's a, that's a great question.
So, what's the issue there? That curb is not...
It's flush.
It's not a full six-inch reveal.
The whole thing is flush?
Yeah, instead of going back up again.
What are, what are your, what's your handicap sign post-detail?
It's a standard DOT, but concrete...
They're the blue ones. They're the blue ones. They should be the blue sleeves. But Cumberland Farms, we made them put in decorative bollards.
Right. I'm just saying, you know, what, if we put in a four-inch bollard, what color cover would be appropriate?
I think they'd like to do yellow, because I think that's what's standard. If it has to be painted afterwards, they'd be willing to paint it blue if that's...
We did, we gave Cumberland Farms a choice of black and white, and they...
I thought they were green.
I think they...
They're white.
They're white.
We wouldn't want them blue because that would indicate a handicap.
So, I would need to do the white, black, or something like that, like yellow. I don't think the architect would like the yellow.
The standard color comes yellow, but if we want to have them painted, we can certainly have them painted.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about classic sleeves.
They make white covers.
Okay.
We're talking about decorative bollard, not, not just a...
We're at the commission's direction. So, whatever the commission would like, we'd like to put bollards there.
I'd like to resolve these as we go through.
Exactly.
Yeah, what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, there's white decorative.
Something comparable to what Cumberland Farms...
Absolutely.
Yellow.
Something comparable to what Cumberland Farms...
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
All right, just run it by staff.
And we'd like to do that in the spring. Not immediately. We'd like to do that...
How are you going to protect that? I mean, if you're, if you want this to be a functional site, how are you going to protect that from cars driving up into that area? That's pretty much of a safety issue. I don't think we have that much frost in the ground right now.
There's quite a bit of snow on the ground, and I, and...
That prevents frost.
That's all pavement, though.
No, I understand.
That prevents frost. It insulates the ground.
You have the signs in.
You, you could put, you know, I, the only reason I'm hesitant in suggesting is because I would not want to see this as a permanent issue, but they could put the concrete, they make a concrete stand that they sit in, that bollards sit in, that a handicap sign would sit in, or something like that. You could actually buy those precast, but, you know, it's kind of, they're kind of expensive for a couple of months.
What we're trying, what our, what my, what our goal is, is to get, is to have the commission to come out of this saying, okay, you know what, we can, we're comfortable allowing staff to issue a conditional CO immediately, or in the next few days...
That's my goal, too, to resolve all of these issues so that you don't have to come back here.
I think we can put something in there temporarily to prevent, I certainly think we, I mean, there's a number of things.
Put, you could put...
You could do, you could do a, you could do a five-gallon drum, five-gallon bucket filled with concrete.
We don't allow them because it's a tripping hazard, especially where you have a flush curb condition.
What's going in the building?
What's going in the building? There's a, there's a, there's a Verizon Wireless store, which is anxious to open.
So, what if you put two signs that said Verizon customers only in the buckets like the handicap? Would that work? Cement bollards?
I don't know what the customer's, no.
Well, I mean, there's going to be, and there would just be a temporary fix.
I don't want them getting used to a sign that says Verizon customers.
Yeah, I don't think that's a, yeah. But I think we could do, we could do a five-gallon pail filled with concrete and put it in front of those spaces to create that, you know, stop, so people don't just drive onto the sidewalk.
You don't think they could be installed now?
I can talk to the contractor. When we, when we reviewed this list, that was something he wanted to do in the spring. He said he would do bollards. He wanted to do the yellow sleeves. I said they may not allow that. So, now we understand we're going to do decorative, decorative white bollards.
Let's see if they can get the bollards in.
Did they plow it?
If not...
Did they plow the parking lot?
They did. They plowed the parking lot. It's plowed right now.
If not, come back to staff with a proposal for some type of a protective measure in those two spots.
They can probably put those in this time of year. They can probably put them in this time of year.
I think so. I don't think there's that much frost on the ground. Anyway, moving on.
Okay.
Which one's supposed to be the one?
I think that we're going to have a...
But the permanent bollards will be something comparable to what's...
Let me ask you a difference, Wes. Verizon hasn't gotten a permit yet. They have to set up their store. By the time they get to an opening, it's going to be spring, right?
But there's, but there's other, so they can't do anything until they get a conditional CO. The owner can't get funds released from the bank until there's a conditional CO. So, there's a number of elements tied to getting the CO issued.
No, I wasn't trying to hold that up.
Okay.
I'm saying there may be some time lapse that could work. We'll do the thing.
Well, can we put it that before...
But I think it's going to work itself out, timeline as far as the real safety issue.
Probably.
How long is it going to take them to fit out that store?
Not long.
A week?
It's not going to be a week or two.
Before the store opens, some type of protective measure has to be...
That's fine. That's fair.
They won't open for another...
Yeah, but if it takes them that long to open up, then they could put the permanent bollards in.
Right. So, either, so either install permanent bollards before the store is allowed to open, or some other protective measures installed.
Right.
True. That's best.
That works. We should put in a condition with weather, too, no? Because if it's nice out for the next six weeks, and then they go with...
I don't want to get too carried. I agree with what you're saying, but we'll encompass that into the end with the completion of all the other items.
Okay.
We're not going to give them a year.
That's, my fear is that it gets looked over, and we run into a situation like the one from last meeting.
I wasn't here.
No, no, it wasn't you. It might have been, though.
It was your plan, though.
It might have been. It might have been you. Hey. For now, let's say it's not.
I can't lie, my hands are that. Number eight, provide temporary pavement ramping cold patch at this time of year at the handicap sidewalk ramp off the front sidewalk. Return to achieve flush condition. We'll do that now. That can be something we'll do before they issue the temporary CO, conditional CO season. Number nine, these, the number of these other ones having to do with drainage are requested in the spring, but we'll throw them each together. Trim all piping within each catch basin to achieve flush conditions. I believe a lot of those were actually done. I think there were still some silt sacks in some of the catch basins, but we, yeah, so we'd actually like to just wait until that, wait until the spring to complete that item. Number 10, cement all shelves within each catch...
Why can't they trim the pipes now?
Well, so there's a, a number of these drainage issues, we'd like to wait until the spring, because right now, so right now, we're in a situation where we have snow on the ground, and everything's, everything's essentially frozen and stable. There's going to be, you know, until everything on the perimeter is fully stabilized and hydroceded and landscaping installed and things like that, there's going to be sediment that gets into the catch basins. We're trying to, we have silt sacks still in there to provide the maximum protection against that, but rather than go in and clean everything now, we'd like to wait until the spring and everything's stabilized, and then go in and clean it once. And kind of deal with all of the storm, stormwater-related issues all at that same time. So, 10, cement all shelves within each catch basin to a 45-degree angle to create a self-cleaning condition. We'd like to do that in the spring. Clean out all sediment from each catch basin sump. We'd like to do that in the spring. Remove all leaf matter and algae from the drainage basin trash rack as it is impeding flow. We'd like to do that in the spring. There really isn't a lot of flow right now anyways, and as soon as things start to thaw, they can go in and they can, they can get rid of that, any of that algae or litter, which is...
Before we start getting into a rainy season or thaw, if there's any accumulation of leaves or other debris, they should at least go in and clean out the bulk of what they can.
I think that's, and that's perfectly reasonable, and that's fine.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for, because the, the height of the water in the basin is actually up above the outlet pipe.
The trash rack?
Yeah, it's actually above the outlet pipe from algae and the stuff up against the trash rack. So, if that's removed, that water will go down, and it should make it dry out and easier to plant when the weather gets better.
They should, they should do that now.
Okay.
Maybe not 100%, but, you know, that's his conditions of life.
Absolutely.
I'm hoping the algae just came from the initial...
I think it was probably, because they did some of the, they did some, they did like partial plantings and things like that.
Yeah.
So I think that's probably.
Fertilizer or something, because it's like, wow, that's like, that must've been just from that initial jolt.
Yeah, and I think, um.
It's probably coming from the thing next door.
I was gonna say, there may be some, there may be some drainage contributing from an offsite source which may be contributing to that.
I hope not, but, because you got a pretty good length on your, your swell going in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's coming from another point.
Hopefully when you get the plants in there and the plants are filtering that, that should take care of it.
Right. Number fourteen, provide in the spring, provide three inches of topsoil throughout the site. We'd like to do that in the spring once the weather thaws. Remove all sediment from the riprap pads at the rear of the property, specifically at the inlet aprons, we'd like to do all that cleanup in the spring. Um, provide erosion control throughout the site, I think right now, everything's frozen and covered in snow, as soon as we get to a snowmelt and it's spring, everything, we want everything stabilized from a, from a hydro seeding standpoint, from a planting standpoint, hay, et cetera, so that'll be that final stabilization. The rear parking lot needs to be swept and cleaned prior to use, that's okay, we'll happily do that now. All the revisions to the ASBIL, we can certainly make all those revisions, we'd like to do that in the spring, once all this work is completed and submit that as part of the final, um, sign offs. Uh, number twenty, in the wetlands, conditions of approval. Uh, the ASBILs, something we would do in the spring. Uh, number twenty-one, the verification of an appropriate professional about the plantings. Um, we'd like to do that once everything's completed. Uh, twenty-two, the request for the conditional C.O., that's, that's why we're here. And then the last page, priority issuance of a permanent certificate of zoning compliance. Following should be completed. Uh, all the improvements consistent with assigned plans, we're here tonight talking about what's gonna be done in the spring versus now. Water supply shall be completed, we've, we've provided documentation of that. Access driveway, D.O.T. sidelines, et cetera, that will be provided. And then all disturbed areas to be stabilized, that'll be completed in the spring, and then the final ASBIL, which is what we'd like to do in the spring. I think that's everything on, on Will and Scott's list. There was one other item that I thought we could discuss, which is outside of everything in this list. Now, from a landscaping standpoint, you know, Will's been great to work with because there were a number of revisions that came up as we were doing the plantings towards the end of the season. And, um, the landscape contractor, who is a Monroe operator, had suggested a number of revisions, we worked through those with Will, we made a number of those revisions, but he had, he had come back and he requested to change, um, the black, the black spruce, which was approved as a ten-foot-high tree, um, with the combinations of Norway spruces and green giant arborvitae's. And Will said, no, for a number of reasons. The Norway spruce, I think they grow too large, and Will, please jump in from a plant standpoint, because this is not my expertise. Um, but then, and then also the, they said try to source the ten-foot, um, black spruces elsewhere. We've called a number of nursery providers throughout the state and throughout the area, and the best we can get for black spruces are six to seven feet tall. So what we were gonna suggest, and, and Mary hadn't had a chance to reach out to you yet, but maybe do it instead of, instead of the forty-three, instead of the forty-three black spruces, that, that were, um, ten to twelve feet tall, do a combination of black spruces, six to seven feet tall, that we planted at the higher elevations, and then do green giant arborvitae's on the lower elevations.
Can you do, uh, a green spruce or a blue spruce?
Maybe.
Arborvitae's, I don't, are not gonna survive there.
Green spruce or the blue spruce instead of the.
It doesn't survive, but they're gonna look terrible in the bottom, they're gonna be too tall and they're gonna look terrible.
I mean, we can certainly look at green spruce or blue spruce instead of the, the green giants. I think the bigger thing was, they just, we can't source the ten-foot-high black spruce. So we could do six to seven feet.
Well, the combination, if you could combo some of them, it'd be better you get some variety in height plus you get a variety of species rather than having all one species.
Right, that was another thing that we saw was a much better.
I think that would be fine if you, if that's.
How tall do they get?
They grow slow, but they can get.
Spruces grow real slow.
Really, really tall, but they grow slow.
Okay, how tall do they get?
What?
Which one?
They just keep going.
They don't grow that tall.
Fifty, twenty feet?
In, in your lifetime, you won't see it, but they can grow up to fifty feet, but.
Fifty feet?
Yeah, but they're not going to.
In fifty years. Your life. Girls, I mean, girls, I mean. I'm never gonna die. So I will see that fifty-foot spruce.
And in a commercial operation, you know, you need to go in and take trees out, put in, you know, you need to do that at your house too. Things get mature, you need to replace them.
Well, I think, I think if the commission's comfortable with that, I think we can work with, with staff, we just couldn't get the ten-foot blue spruce. Or black spruce.
Work it out, staff, please. Will is our planting expert.
Awesome, that was it.
I just have a, a question, I'm just curious, you know, I drive by this site every day, twice a day at least.
We do.
And, um, it's at dormant for several months. Why all of a sudden now the urgency? Why wasn't some of this work done when conditions permitted it to be done?
I think, um, contractors have interesting schedules, I think. Um, sense of urgency sometimes tied to tenant interest perhaps, I, I, I don't know all the, the, the details. Um, but I know that now there's a sense of urgency to try to get this done as quick as possible. I think there was coordination between the waterline installation, when that work was gonna get done, when the septic system was finally done and finished and, and, and approved and installed. I think all those things kind of came into play. I wasn't a part of all those construction schedule discussions, so, I don't think, I don't have the perfect answer or the magic answer, I just think, uh, the good news is we're here now.
One other very important question. There are several significant items that you want to complete in the spring, and I understand that they can't be done now. I want a completion date.
Okay.
And that's, that's going to be part of the conditional C.O., that the work, if the work is not done by that date, we shut down the building.
I, I, I think the, I think the regs and the provisions talk about six months, but I think we can do better than six months, can we say?
Six months.
Huh?
We're not gonna allow six months.
Right, so can we say, can we say the end of June?
July first.
July first, perfect.
That's what your proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone else?
Can they file for extension on that?
No.
No?
Well, they'd have to come back. They'd have to come back to the commission if they're not done by July first. Everybody comfortable with that?
So I would put in, um, so that we don't just have to take action by not closing it down, but that we also wouldn't be issuing any more building permits, or zoning permits for new tenants.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So you, you think that that's adequate among the time?
I do.
I do too, but I just wanna make sure that we're not imposing any conditions upon you that are, you find onerous.
I don't find them onerous. I'm not the contractor, but I don't see how he could find them onerous, I think that's more than fair, more than reasonable.
And then for the record, just a clarification that the, per the bond agreement that's already been signed, the bond would automatically become a performance.
We already, uh.
No, I, I, yeah, okay, I thought I heard that.
They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to fill out papers to do that.
Yeah, okay, well.
Anybody have any questions?
No, sir.
I assume the bond hasn't been at least, uh, reduced at any rate?
Nope.
No, no, it, it's, like you said, it turns into a performance bond now. Staff have anything else? Mr. Soling, anything else?
No.
I guess we're done here.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we, uh?
I don't know.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on this now or later? Um, you can do it now. All, all of our regional members are here. All right, so we have an application asking for a temporary certificate of occupancy, based on conditions that we described.
Which includes a temporary certificate of zoning compliance.
Correct, temporary certificate of zoning compliance, with a condition that all work be completed by July first. So we have a motion.
Second.
No, I said, do we have?
Go ahead. Move to approve SCP two thousand fourteen, there's thirteen, there's A three, four, six, four, main street. To issue a conditional certificate of zoning compliance and conditional certificate of occupancy. Subject to what we've discussed tonight.
Second.
Okay.
Good job.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any further discussion?
No, sir.
Follow the roll.
Mayini, yes.
Order, yes.
Lisi, yes. Ambrose, yes.
I guess we're not going to hold a public hearing tonight.
Yeah, I don't know what happened to, um, well, they weren't ready anyway. You would probably have to convince, we don't have anything from the, from the Wetlands Commission. So I would, I think we should, uh.
Maybe that's what happened.
You should reconvene and, and adjourn to the next meeting. Reconvene both in, in the next meeting.
Yeah, open them.
Well.
Reconvene and then close?
Just acknowledge that we're reconvening, that, and we're, not closing, we're adjourning it. We're adjourning it to the twenty-first.
Well, that's, that's twenty-first, is that next meeting?
That was in the pack.
Yeah.
Don't say, isn't that?
That's part of those, yeah.
Yeah.
You can just acknowledge that, you don't have to.
Yeah, um, public, we have two public hearings, one for ZCA two thousand eighteen dash oh two, file one zero one three D five seventy-five Monroe Turnpike, and one for SCP two thousand eighteen dash twelve, file number one six zero seven A five seventy-five Monroe Turnpike. Uh, seeing as the applicant is not here, we're going to continue these to our next meeting.
Yeah, and the regulated activity for wetlands, they, um, have started their deliberation, they've asked for draft approval, but they're gonna be voting at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thirteen.
So that'll be before our next meeting.
Yep.
All right, moving on, item number nine, time extensions, we have none. Item ten, bond releases or reductions. We have two. First one is for one fifty-four Enterprise Drive, for SCP two thousand sixteen dash twelve, file number one five eight two A, thirty-eight thousand dollar bond. The bond inspection report shows that some work remains to be completed. Complete the salt shed with access doors and wall units. Although the utility storage racks are in place, an application, a building permit needs to be submitted to the building department. The fueling station needs to be installed, and the second frying tank needs to be installed. So the, uh, bond release report is recommending that we reduce the thirty-eight thousand dollar bond by twenty-eight thousand dollars. We're remaining ten thousand dollar bond. So let's start off with a motion.
Okay, let's move to approve on reduction. And, um, SCP two thousand sixteen dash twelve, fifteen eighty-two A, one fifty-four Enterprise Drive. Reducing thirty-eight thousand by twenty-eight thousand to ten thousand.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Scott, anything you wanna add to this?
No, I couldn't want to put everything, unless you have a question.
Anybody have a question?
If we reduce it down, is that enough money to cover the work that needs to be done?
Well, I mean, I, I didn't do a specific, uh, estimate of it, I just shot for a number that I thought was reasonable, that, you know, you start to get down too low and then kinda gets hard to chase after some people because they, they lose track of the fact that they even have a bond. So, I thought that, that was pretty much as, you know, as low as I thought it should go, but obviously it's your choice.
The site is substantially developed, there, there are a few minor items that are, are still remaining that, um.
A bigger issue comes with the next one, which is related to this one.
Any other questions or comments? Do you know anything else on that?
I just, I, I just don't know if that ten grand is enough to.
Well, see, the, the ten grand doesn't have to cover the installation of these items, it has to cover the restoration of the property if this work is not done.
Okay. Does that cover it? You sure?
Yeah.
Is that enough of an influence to get it done? Ten thousand dollars?
Ten thousand?
Should be.
It'd influence me.
Would it influence you? No. So I'm getting twenty-eight back.
Two of the items aren't all important to, to the commission in the sense that they're, they're fitted out as far as, um, the ground and all that, so it's just the installation of something, so it just helps their operation. It's not a functional thing of the site. It's really the, uh, the first two things.
They, they, they could very well come back for a site plan modification and say, we wanna eliminate these from our plan.
Yeah, the only one they can't eliminate is the salt storage, um, we're supposed to have a, a front door and all that, that, and they're using it for that now, so, that's something that, um, but, but you're right, yeah, the other ones, they could decide they don't even wanna do that.
Okay. No more questions?
Okay, follow the roll.
Mayini, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Order, yes.
Lisi, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Okay, the next item is bond release for one sixty-four Enterprise Drive, SCP two thousand sixteen dash twelve, file one five eight two A. Is it same application?
This is, this was, um, if you recall, was done together, it's the two lots that were next to each other.
Right.
They, they built on one, didn't build on the other. There's bond on each separate, there's separate bonds.
They were bonded separately, but it was.
Bonded separately, and they have separate approvals in the sense of what's on each lot. They stand alone, but they just prosecute at the same time.
Okay. This report says that the, uh, is recommending that the bond release request should be denied until the following items have been addressed. Piles of concrete and fill material need to be removed, the lot needs to be stabilized with topsoil and seeding, or conversely, the building slash site development needs to be completed. The storage containers need to be removed, some form of barrier between the lots, although not specifically required, is recommended in order to avoid future encroachment issues. And the proposed building and respective site improvements need to be constructed. There's some photographs on the back. Some of you may have been on the commission when this application was originally approved. If you remember, the landscaper was developing one fifty-four, they had future plans for one sixty-four, but, uh, they were not going to be using that property, and the property was supposed to be stabilized. Contrary to that, the property is being used.
End of note, as you see, the trailers are the, the owner's trailers. If you recall, an area that was for storage of such things. I think the problem is, they lease part of their building to somebody else. And they're using those areas, and they're just putting their stuff on this neighboring property because there's not enough room. So that's sort of the problem that I think Scott had identified during the approval process, that would probably happen, and it's come to truth. So I don't, you know, even if they take these away, I don't know where they're putting it.
Okay. But the, uh, the recommendation from staff is to deny the, the bond release at this time. So, like, you can have a motion?
Move to deny the bond release at this time for SCP two thousand sixteen dash twelve, fifteen eighty-two A, one sixty-four Enterprise Drive.
We have a second?
Second.
Any, any other discussion, questions? The motion is for denial, so an affirmative vote would be for denial. Follow the roll.
Mayini, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Order, yes.
Lisi, yes. Ambrose, yes.
When I transmit that, do you want to say anything about, uh, activities?
Is it on the list?
When I transmit the denial, do you want me to say anything on behalf of the commission about things?
Well, maybe Joel needs to talk to him.
Okay.
Item number eleven, pending meeting minutes. There are the meeting minutes for February twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. I'm not gonna seat you for this, Ken. So Porter, Ambrose, Mayini were present. You get a motion?
Uh, motion to approve February twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, meeting minutes, as drafted. Second.
Okay. Any comments? Corrections? Page three. Last paragraph, right about in the middle, the line that begins with the word door. The second word should be can instead of cab. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything?
No, sir.
Follow the roll.
Mayini, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes. Okay, pending application deliberations determinations, item number twelve. SCP two thousand eighteen dash oh five, file number one six zero zero A, twenty-seven Main Street. There's a special exception permit for a building addition to extend the existing range lanes, the shooting range on twenty-seven Main Street. We had an application for the. We had an application for the proposed extension of the footprint length of the previously approved 10-lane indoor recreation shooting range. ZBA area variance was granted to reduce the front yard setback as required by the proposed plan. Site development is limited to a portion of the site that's in the B1 district. The site is within 500 feet of the town boundary, and a notice was sent to Trumbull on January 2nd, 2019. There's no flood plain or wetlands or watercourses on the property. Building addition to extend the length of the indoor shooting lanes is proposed to mimic in appearance the existing building. The site is served by two unsignalized driveways, which are not proposed to be changed. Site buildings are presently connected to public water. Existing subsurface separate facilities will remain unchanged. A revised use-specific parking standard is proposed, consisting of a minimum of two spaces for employees plus one space per lane, in addition to the required two spaces for the residents for a total minimum of 14 spaces. We held a public hearing on February 7th, it was closed on February 21st. Changes in the site use will be minimal. No change to the hours of operation. Proposed action is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. Proposes new commercial development within the targeted Main Street corridor. Location, nature, height, and design of the proposed building addition will match the existing conditions. New lighting will be minimal. Dark Sky compliant, consistent with existing lights. The off-street parking will be paved. The proposed use involves development of private property, changes to which are not anticipated to generate significant new demands for police, fire, and emergency services. So, Ken, you're seated for this one. So, we have Porter, Ambrosi, Maeney, and Wilk. So, let's start off with a motion.
I make a motion that we approve SEP 2018-05, file 1600 Alpha, 27 Main Street, draft approval resolution.
What was the SEP number?
2018-05.
2018-05?
I think the agenda is wrong. It's 2018-13.
2018-13.
Okay. 2018-13, file 1608A. The extension of the range lanes. What's that? As drafted.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, sir.
I think the draft pretty much spells out everything that we discussed as part of our approval process.
Does I have a second though? Pardon me? I didn't have a second, I'm sorry.
All right, no further discussion, call the roll.
Wilk, yes.
Maeney, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes. Nothing else for us to deliberate on, right? Let's go.
I'm going to take my lead.
Good night, Scott.
Okay.
Great job tonight.
All right, other business, regulation review amendment work session. Last week, or last meeting, we started to review our regulations concerning alcohol. The current, or the members that were in attendance at that meeting asked that we table it until we have more commissioners present, because there were only four of us in attendance that night. So, now that we have everybody here, minus our one missing person, this would be a good night to go over again.
A ghost member?
All right, so this is a draft for a text amendment. This is something that the regulation subcommittee is putting forward for the full commission to review and evaluate. And then, the next step would be going to a public hearing based on what we will decide we want to do. So, the first item is we identified in our definition section where the grocery store is. Because we have, there are what are called grocery beer permits, like Stop &amp; Shop, and Big Y have them. But our regulations don't fully describe what we consider to be a grocery store. So, this is the description or proposal, or the definition that we're proposing to add to our definition section. So, it's a retail establishment, supermarket, food store, general store, food market, delicatessen, or similar, where most, 80% or more of the floor area is devoted to the sale of consumer-processed, prepackaged, and perishable food products for home preparation and consumption, but where other typical home and personal care products may also be sold. So, basically, it's saying you've got to sell food products. Not prepared foods, but food products that people buy and take home and cook. In 80% of the floor area of the store.
So, a question, would this be bringing any stores in town into, like, some of the delis maybe, or no?
If they have 80% of their floor space dedicated to consumer products, yes.
Something like Gaitano's, maybe, might actually...
I've never been in there.
...get that.
You're missing a good time.
Yeah, you really are, they make some good food.
That's a great sandwich, too.
Better than Subway?
Subway.
What about, like, the Cumberland Farms or other...
Yeah, here you go, Dollar Hot Dog.
Seeing if this brings them into...
They...
They could have 80%.
They... If they did, they would qualify as a grocery store. I haven't seen one yet that has 80% of their floor area covered with grocery items.
Yeah, because candies don't count.
Because that's not...
Gaitano's might qualify.
Gaitano's would qualify, they qualify.
Because they have all the racks in there.
No, delicatessen of the traditional sense would certainly qualify.
Yeah, because there was one on the other side of town that had it, but they're not, they're no longer.
But again, they'd be serving that function. You know, they're more than just a sandwich maker, they're...
Yeah.
So, that was item number one, amendment one. Amendment number two pertains to item 6.7 in our regulations, which addresses alcoholic beverages. 6.7.1, we're not proposing any changes to. 6.7.2, location of sale limited. Item number A, commission shall find that the proximity of the premises to churches, schools, or any places frequented by minors shall not be such as to constitute a hazard to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. We're not proposing any change to that. So, the commission still has... Any application has to come before the zoning permission for a sign-off anyway. We have the right to deem whether or not we feel that's an appropriate location. The second item, the entrance to any premises having a permit for the sale of alcoholic liquor, beer, or wine for consumption off the premises, package stores, pharmacies, or similar uses shall be more than 1,500 feet from the property line of the premise for which a like permit is requested. Such measurement shall be from the property line of the premises to the property line of the premises for which a like permit is requested. No on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages shall be permitted unless sold by the permitty having the permit approval of the commission. We are proposing to strike that section entirely.
What was the thought process of getting rid of and not just lowering the number?
It's retail?
It's a retail use, and when we discussed it, we don't regulate any other retail use. There's some information in your packet that was on the dais tonight. I don't know if any of you had a chance to look through it.
Yes.
Yeah.
But there was a section from the American Law of Zoning. And I'm just going to pull a section out of here, it says, "Where the courts have concluded that the main purpose of a zoning ordinance or decision is to regulate or restrict business competition, they have disapproved. Such a regulation is said not to be a proper purpose of zoning." You know, I've looked back, and I've asked other people to give me input as to why we had this regulation to begin with. And other than the fact that it used to be a state regulation, that I believe the town probably adopted as following in suit with the state, I don't know why else we had that regulation. The state abolished that, I don't remember when, but...
I don't know when, it was a while ago.
It was quite some time ago. So, taking aside the churches, schools, and anything like that, which we already have control over by section 6.72A, I don't know why we would have a separation distance between two similar retail establishments.
I understand.
But I'm looking, I'm looking for everyone else's opinions.
I think we should still have some ability to address it, you know, just like we can with the churches and schools. Not to give any specific distance, but just have the ability to, you know, address it if it comes before us, to have that opportunity.
Well, but for, um... For what reason? Like, you're only allowed a certain amount of permits.
Right.
And we only get seven. Within town, you're only allowed a certain amount, so...
We're 2,500 people as well.
You're already controlling it from churches, schools, minors, and that kind of stuff. I was in the same boat you were, I'll be honest with you, I was. And then, the more people I talk to, the more, I just, I'm more stuck on A, as long as A doesn't get changed?
Well, there's no harm in providing that requirement, that we have the ability to review it, that's all.
But then you're...
But then, it's still... It's not a mandated 1,500 feet, or 500 feet, or 300 feet.
Are you going to do that at a pizza place?
No.
Are you going to do it in Elsman?
You're going to open yourself up to, I've been looking through all these lawsuits in the air, and every one of them, you know, when they tried to do it, ruled against the towns. So, they've lost every time they wanted to put in some barrier. According to these guys, you go to court with it, you're going to lose, and it's going to go in favor of the business owner. So, you've got to think about that, too. But there's quite a few of them in here.
That's just, that's my opinion, to just have the ability to review it.
Well, we do have that.
Well, but not in respect to...
Well, let's look at it differently. You're reviewing it, let's say you have that ability, and you find that it's, something about it you don't like, so you want to have some kind of limitation or restrict or denial. What is your rationale for denying one package store from being within 10 feet, or 100, or 1,000 feet when they come in front of you? Because that's what's going to hold up in court.
Yeah, but still, A won't hold up in court either, well...
You're going to, you can, you might be able to make some case with, you know, a child daycare center next to a store better than you would a store to a store.
Yeah, I'd also like to point out to those who didn't realize this, that, you know, in Village Square, the adjacent property is Monroe L.
Yeah, well, there's also a daycare, there's also a daycare in the St. Plaza.
Yeah.
Behind it, right?
You know, so...
And they have wine in the church. It's insane.
That liquor store closed in Village Square?
Oh, yeah.
Geez, I live right behind, I don't know that.
Yeah.
Closed for over a year.
So, how often you go out to get liquor over there?
You go there.
Yeah, but does a daycare constitute like a school or anything?
No, but it's...
It's a place frequented by minors.
And how that, how'd they get away with that?
Well, because it doesn't, there was no separation distance required. It's just saying that the commission shall find that the proximity does not constitute a hazard to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood.
So, the commission approved it at the time, obviously.
Or it might have been done before these regulations were in place.
In the federal government, I tell you that we repealed prohibition in 1933.
Basically, what they're saying is the law's antiquated, or the separation part of it, except for the churches and schools and the minors or whatever.
And like I said, there's no required distance, you just have to make sure that the commission finds that it's, doesn't create any hazards.
Right, it could be nearby, but you can mitigate the nearby through site design.
What's that? What do you mean, what did you say?
Could be across the street.
Could be across the street, there could be a fence between the two properties, you know, there's a lot of ways to do it.
We have something to say about, we have something to say about that. All right, a liquor store next to a liquor store, we don't have, we wouldn't have anything to say about that.
We'd get sued if we denied itself.
And we'd...
What's that? We'd get sued if we denied it.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I know, that, I don't want to go that route. And the number of liquor stores is in Monroe L, limited to seven. That's based on the population, right?
State, yeah.
So, if the population increases, you could have another, that's... One.
If we hit 20,000 people, if we had 20,000 people, we'd get one more.
If it decreases, we could get less.
Additional 20,000?
And at the rate we're going, we're not going to have 20,000 people.
Yeah, I don't know if they can take it away.
They won't take it away, it's grandfather, so they won't take it away.
I don't know, maybe if one...
If one closed up, I mean...
If one closed, then maybe they wouldn't reissue the permit. I don't know, but that's, that's not this discussion.
States couldn't do that, they'd make money.
Yeah. Let's circle back to this. The next item is, we'll scroll up a little. This relates to restaurants. This was something that the Chamber of Commerce and the EDC specifically asked us to take a look at and address. Right now, our regulations require that any restaurant that wants to serve alcohol has to have a minimum of 50 seats in order to be able to get a license. So, what we're proposing is to eliminate the number of seats required for a restaurant, but identify exactly which type of restaurants, because we have five or six restaurants identified in our zoning regulations under our definition section. We're identifying which types of restaurants we're saying can have alcohol service. And it's on-premises caterers like Waterview, Stone Barn, or a full-service restaurant, which is defined in our regulations as...
Basically, with full-table service, we have a waiter, waitress comes to you, table layout, menus, and they take it. So, it's not the McDonald's in the world, it's the...
What about, like, Last Job Coffee Shop, where technically, you have a menu, they bring the food out to you? Yeah, they do. They just bring it to you.
They'll bring it to your table, and you sit down. Yeah, you order at a counter, and then sit down.
Like, how would that work? I mean, granted, that's not a place that's probably going to... I mean, granted, that's not a place that's probably gonna, I mean, I guess they could have shabuka with their espresso, I mean, I, I mean, I guess, I don't know, I'm just saying, like, what do you do in that situation?
I don't know, we'd have to, have to review their operation, see how it fits the definitions in our regulations.
Because they definitely have room for fifties. Oh, that's right.
There is, there is no.
You're getting rid of those, but you, you, you know, I just don't know how a place like that would work.
I don't either, without knowing their specific operation.
You haven't been there either? Dude, you gotta get out of Monroe a little bit more.
It's a bridge bar, come on.
That's true.
But you, in, in Last Drop, do you?
No, 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 I'm not saying them specifically, I'm saying, like, that's.
Place you order up at the counter and they deliver it to you, right? Or do they come to your table?
They don't, they don't have what's really classified as full table service.
Full table service. No, they don't come to take you.
You order and bring it to you, to the table.
Yeah, you order at a counter, kinda like.
You have to sit down with a menu and they're coming to your table, taking your order.
It's also gonna be depending on how they establish themselves, because there is the retail food establishment, which they may teeter into, which has a very low parking count compared to a full-service restaurant. So to be the full-service restaurant, you're also gonna bring your parking count up, and if they don't have the parking, they're never gonna be classified a full-service restaurant.
So what about Bills?
Bills, they have wait service, don't they?
Yeah, they call your name, you go back up to the counter, and you get your food.
Yeah, you don't, they don't have.
So they wouldn't, so they wouldn't classify, right?
They wouldn't be classified as a. This is for people that have waiters at home.
I understand, I understand, but.
This is for the smaller, the smaller true restaurants, like, the place.
I get it, but there's great areas, that's all I'm asking.
The place that's in that little shopping center where Outback Feed is, you know.
Oh, Brothers.
Brothers.
Oh.
Used to be a restaurant.
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah.
Used to be a restaurant.
Yeah, you know, I was in there the other night, and I counted, they have like forty seats.
Give it that.
No, they have forty, I counted, you know, that's, that's a full-service restaurant. You go in, you sit down, you know, you get table service.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about like those in-between ones, like, technically, so what I'm saying is Bills could then have, Bills could get away with, they could.
Bills do dinner?
They do.
Yeah.
They're open till eight o'clock at night. So they technically could get rid of walking up to, if they wanted to go to alcohol.
They hire two waitresses, they'd be, they'd be saying.
Oh, yeah.
But then they're doing what they should be.
Parking hour for that.
I'm just asking.
But I'm saying that, but they would have.
I'm not opposed to this, I'm just saying, like.
No, no, but I'm saying they're gonna have to change all that.
I mean, if you want to have the alcohol service, you have to pony up to the, the bar, that's all, not pun intended.
Okay. Because there's a lot of places that maybe now that if we do put this through, that may entice them to change a little bit.
Well, I, I think, you know, I don't know how true it is, but someone said the strong has moved because they put you in a lighter.
Yeah, here they have a full bar now.
They're in Newtown now, so.
They have a full bar in Newtown.
Yeah, that's where they moved to.
We had some other ones leave because.
And they also wanted more seats, too, so, you didn't have enough, now they got a bigger place.
So places like, I've never been to Bills, I've never been to the coffee drop, what, what do they serve the food on?
Plates?
Plates.
Last Drop Coffee Shop does, uh, if you get it, yeah, they'll do hard plates if you get it there.
Yeah, like plates, plates.
Like dishes, yeah.
That's another factor that has to.
Bills, Bills are trays and, they don't do.
They got plates.
Hard plates?
Yeah, Bills, Bills, yeah.
That they, that they replace marsh, they're not disposable.
They don't have regular.
No, I think theirs is.
No, they don't have.
If they're disposable, they're not gonna meet that.
Okay, in any, in any case.
Or maybe you're right.
If, if an establishment wants to change their business model and provide full table service with a wait staff and all of that.
It will be easier with this.
And, and they can meet the other requirements as, for a full-service restaurant with the parking standards and anything that the health department might require.
And state, right, to get the license.
Yeah, then, as far as we're concerned, they're good to go.
Restaurants in town.
And they still gotta come to you.
Then item number C, any premises or establishment having an appropriate state of Connecticut license for the sale of alcoholic beverages of any type for consumption off the premises shall have its location determined appropriate by the commission. So right there, what you were, what you were saying, that gives us that control.
That's for restaurants, though?
No, no, this is anything. This is any premises or establishment having an appropriate state of Connecticut license for the sale of alcoholic beverages of any type for consumption off the premises shall have its location determined appropriate by the commission. Grocery store beer permit from the state of Connecticut shall be limited to a grocery store as defined in these regulations, that's the definition that we're adding. Limited on-premises consumption may be authorized based on the particular associated state of Connecticut license, or same as otherwise permitted by the state license, i.e. tastings is maybe permitted with a package store license. So what you were asking, that we have a little bit of control or say, that's, that's covered by that portion. And then group hubs are exempt from the provisions of six point seven point two B above.
That's because we're renumbering, pardon me?
That was just because of renumbering. So.
So this is to a public hearing, next?
That would be the next step, this is just, you know, as you know, we went over this on the subcommittee, and now this is for the full commission review, the next step would be, you know, a public notice and then a public hearing.
After seeing all the evidence, uh, you know, last meeting was pretty difficult, we had no clear-cut stuff in front of us, but now we do, so.
I think moving it towards a public hearing, find out what the trouble thinks is the next step.
Definitely towards a public hearing.
Your turn.
Yeah, no, like, it goes Ryan, Ken, me, and Leon. And then he looks at you, and you're like, yes, well.
Thinking of my route through the process.
No, I. I just, we don't have any control, really, what you're saying, we have some control there with C.
We have control with C.
And what kind of control do we have?
We have to determine it's appropriate. We have to determine that the location is appropriate.
Right, and what does that mean?
Means, we look at the application, and we say, yes, we think it's an appropriate location for a liquor store, or no, we don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, so if we deny and say it's not appropriate, what do we have to lay to stand on?
Well, you have to look at what the, what comes before you.
You have to have a good reason.
But, you know, authentically.
Like, yeah, they were open a liquor store next to a daycare.
What examples would you have of that, that's all I'm saying, huh?
I, I don't know, I don't know of any, that's, you know. What, what do you think would make something an inappropriate location?
Well, it depends, like you say, you know, some, some states have concerns about schools and stuff like that, being close.
We have that covered.
It doesn't really matter, because you have to do this by state law anyway. You're required to determine appropriateness, and that authorized the zoning enforcement to sign the application to the state, the state will not entertain a liquor license without sign-off by the town that it's appropriate. Same as your repair's license.
I understand that, I'm saying to you is, okay, I got all that, I'm saying to you, what examples do we have that wouldn't be appropriate?
So like if the liquor store wanted to open next to the Honey Tree daycare, again, they already closed it, but now what if somebody else wanted to come in and open another one up in that same spot, it's directly next door?
Yeah, but if we have another daycare center across from another liquor store, there's no, we can't, there's no teeth for us to deny it, because we already have one, you understand what I'm saying? So it's not like you can just use that as an example, because we don't have the teeth, right? Am I right or not?
It's not strong teeth, but.
No, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, it's not baby teeth. My way to say.
Okay.
I'm good with, I'm good with it.
All right, well, then we'll, uh, put this forward to a public hearing. Item number correspondence, Chairman's report, just remind you that we, I'm looking at my calendar. Couple of weeks, three weeks from tonight is the, uh, whatever. The state organization of zoning boards, annual meeting at Aquater.
What date is that?
It's Thursday, the twenty eighth. So if you wanna go, let Will in.
Well, you already wrote me down there, right?
That's at what time?
I have you, Bill, and me, so far.
What time is that?
Put me down.
It's, uh, I think.
It costs money, so you guys say yes, you gotta go.
Yeah, yeah, what time is it?
It's like, I think it opens at.
Five.
Five, yes.
The dinner starts at six, I think, so, and I think the program is immediately following dinner.
So. Southern. Yeah, I was married there, I can't go there.
Yeah, I know, I was married there, too. You're at my wedding.
Was I?
You don't remember? Guess it wasn't.
You have two for one?
Wasn't too memorable.
No, mine was a long time ago.
Uh, put me in.
Any other commissioners have anything to report?
Yeah, you'll go together?
Sure.
Anybody heard anything about the person for our alternate seat?
Uh, nothing yet.
Staff of anything?
No.
Do you have any ideas?
I don't. All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned, eight twenty-four.